All right, well, it is five o'clock, so I'd like to welcome everyone to the Sewer Commissioners Meeting of Monday, August 10, 2020. This meeting is being held by Zoom. Then the board are logged in by video. It will be broadcast by Eastern Community Access Television, Comcast 98 and Verizon 23 on ECAT's website, www.easterncat.org. If you're watching at home and you have a question or a comment, you can email Emma, as in Michael Blanchard, at eastern.ma.us, or pose your question on the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom portal. Please remember to include your name and street address for the minutes. And at this time, I'd like to ask each sewer commissioner to introduce themselves by name to ensure that we have a quorum.
Greg Barger.
Tom Bresar.
Chuck King.
Mark Lamb.
And I'm Dottie Folgenetti. So, thank you very much, everyone. Connor, do you want to give us the introduction?
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So, I'll be uncharacteristically brief, just immediately turn it over to Dave and Jack. We are wrapping up what has been a five-year journey with the Five Corners Sewer Project and have a presentation for the board and for many of the folks who live in that district who are joining us in the attendee slot. I could see a few dozen. To give an update, I think all good news on where the project finances are wrapping up as we've closed this project out and what it looks like from here. So, Jack, Dave, would you like to take it from here?
Sure, I'll turn it right over to Jack. He's got the PowerPoint on his computer and he will be available for any questions.
Hey. Thank you, Dave. Do you guys see the presentation now?
Yep.
We're good?
Yeah.
Perfect. Let me move this off. Okay. Thank you, Connor. And as Connor said, I'm Jack Troidel with Woodard and Curran, the town's sewer engineer. And tonight, we'll be giving you a betterment update for the Five Corners Sewer Project. So, for the agenda tonight, we'll begin with the background and a timeline. We'll follow that by the good stuff, the project costs and the estimated betterments. We're only bringing good news tonight, so that should be exciting. And then we'll talk about the cost categories for property owners that look to tie into the sewer. And we'll talk about when those costs are incurred. And we'll keep it overall pretty short and we'll wrap up with the immediate next steps for those property owners. So, as Connor said, this has been a five-year project, so it's certainly coming to an end in a good way. This August, we completed the sewers and the pump stations. So, we're a pump station and we're waiting for connections to begin. There's some small remaining punchless type work, so you'll still see the contractor out there, but it's functionally complete. Final paving will be later this fall, so bear with us. You've got maybe a month or so of some more road impacts, but then you'll have a nice, nice road and paved surface and it should look pretty nice out there. As far as betterments, the initial schedule was they were going to be issued this fall. They're going to be pushed off by about a year, so that's great news for all the property owners. You'll receive a notice to that betterment early next year. You'll get a letter in the mail. And that will give you instructions and explain how that process will work. But those betterments, instead of being due early next year in 2021, they'll actually, they won't be due until 2022. So, that's a year that they were pushed off. And I'll talk later about how they can be repaid and financed through the town. So, we gave a financial update last summer, and the cost to be recovered by betterments was nearly $12 million, which was down substantially from our initial estimate of $16.8 million. We've been able to drive that cost down even further, so a total of about a $6.7 million reduction. So, last summer, we talked a lot about the diff and how that lowered the costs. Now, the Mass Works grant helped a lot. And then also, we've had some good luck with construction and we've been able to keep the costs down there as well. So, of that $10.1 million to be recouped by betterments, we've got 509.75 SBUs. So, we proportion all the commercial properties and residential properties into that number. So, the math, once you work it out, the estimated betterment range is $19,500 to $21,500 per SBU. If you remember back in just 2018, we were talking closer to $30,000 for those betterments. And last summer, we were talking $22,000 to $25,000. So, again, a huge win on the cost of the project. For reference, this is the betterment methodology. It's largely the same from what we talked about last summer. There were a few adjustments in the condos and some of the single-family residential, but that only impacted a handful of properties and their SBU count went down slightly. So, the betterment cost is what we've been focused on. That's the required cost of this project. Everybody who abuts the sewer line has to pay their betterment. And we'll talk later about how that can be paid. But the optional costs are actually connecting to the sewer. So, if you choose to connect to the sewer, the three costs you'll incur are the private property costs of getting the pipe connected from your property line to your house, a connection fee, which is that is similar to a building permit. There's that permit for the town to oversee your sewer connection, make sure it's done right, and to the town requirements. And then there's the user fee of, once you're connected to sewer, you'll get a quarterly bill, just like your water bill. It's part of your water bill based on your actual use over the quarter. So, of those costs, you'll incur the connection cost whenever you choose to connect, which you can start this August or push off a little bit. But that would be the private connection cost and the connection fee to the town. And then, once you are connected, the quarterly sewer bills will follow. But the betterment, again, you'll get noticed early next year. But the betterment repayment won't be until February 2022, which is part of your tax bill, your actual tax bill. And those repayments can occur over the next 30 years. So, this apportionment schedule shows what the midpoint of our range, we did it at $20,500, of what that looks like over the 30-year term. So, there's a constant principal repayment. And then, when you look at the annual amount, we're actually under $100 monthly equivalent on that repayment, which includes principal and interest. So, that interest is about 2.55% very low rate. Again, payable over up to 30 years. People can make that option in early next year when you get your letter. And there's no issue with prepaying or paying that off early on the betterment. So, a lot of flexibility there. Next steps for property owners. To recap these points, the final betterments, you'll get that letter early next year. So, look for that, probably February timeframe. Plan for those betterment repayments beginning the year after that. So, if you do with those quarterly tax bills, starting February 2022. But in the meantime, think about if you want to tie right into the sewer or when you'd want to tie in. You reach out to a contractor and coordinate the permits with the town. Final paving is coming up. So, as I said, you'll see the roadwork happening again. So, please bear with us. One last round, but we'll try to keep it quick and somewhat painless. And if you do have any need to go into that road, once it is, all areas of the project are going to be paved. It's going to look really nice. And the town will have a moratorium on that, so you can't do other projects in the roadway. So, please get those coordinated and any roadwork completed as soon as you can. But that will not impact connecting the sewer. So, all the sewer pipes have been extended to property lines, so you can tie in at any time. That moratorium has no impact on tying into the sewer system. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to the town or to Woodard and Curran and help answer anything on the betterments. We've listed the Five Corners Sewer website here. Hopefully, people have been using that. But if you go to that site, right at the top is a new link, and that will bring you right to the betterment table. So, property owners can jump onto that and look up the address of the property and see what the betterment range is. It'll give the SBU count and then the calculated range based on what I mentioned before. So, the betterments are available via that site, the current estimate. And that's what we have. I'd be happy to answer any questions or cover anything that's outstanding.
Great. Thank you, Jack. I'm going to go around in our typical order and ask each select board member if they have a question or a comment. After that, I will read the questions that are in the chat, but I do want to say that we're going to answer general questions. And if your question is property-specific, we're going to ask you to reach out to the sewer website or to the town administration office for specific information on your property. So, Craig, if you want to go first?
I just want to tell you that I'm very pleased at, number one, how well the project went, how quickly it went, and the fact that the betterments have been reduced by, what, 60% or thereabouts, Connor? That's terrific for the homeowners and for the businesses in that area. So, congratulations to the department for doing that.
Mom?
Thanks, Craig. I just had a couple items. I think it's a 40% reduction on the betterment, which I think is amazing. The one thing that I did want to point out is, Connor, correct me if I'm wrong, but we always strive to be accurate with a conservative angle. And I'm sensitive to the fact that some people may have made decisions at the beginning of this based upon an expected betterment. But in this case, quite frankly, all of the things that came after the fact and reduced the betterment were items that we worked hard to achieve but could not know at the time of our initial betterment. Is that a fair assessment of how the betterment and then the subsequent lowering occurred, Connor?
Yes. So, there's two main cost drivers for what betterments end up being for folks in the district. One is the construction cost itself, which we don't know until it's done. We obviously have a budget. And thankfully, in this case, the $13.5 million budgeted cost for the sewer construction that has been going on since last year came in 22% under budget. That's not something that we can necessarily plan for and we, along with, I'm sure, all the betterment payers will happily take. So, that's one piece. And the second piece is revenues. When we started this in 2018, we did not have any reason to assume that we would adopt a diff and receive almost $2 million in grants, which in total brought in about $6 million that otherwise would have had to have been collected through betterments or other borrowing. So, I don't think it's typical for a project of this size to drop in its betterment so substantially. I guess Jack from Woodard and Curran can speak to that. I don't think Woodard and Curran has worked with a community that has seen their betterments come down as much as this. But, yeah, that's a long way of saying, yes, we did not know at the time in 2018 that we would have had all of these pieces come together. And obviously, a lot of that has a lot to do with the folks who are tuned in, who helped out with letters of support and obviously, our voters of the community who went to town meeting for the diff. So...
Absolutely. I think it's important to point that out only because the size from the beginning to the end, while fantastic for those people and the part of the best outcome we could have imagined, at the time, that may have influenced people's decisions and behaviors. And I just want to make sure everybody in the community knows, we always strive for accuracy. And that the reduction, quite frankly, is the continued effort by so many involved to achieve such a great result. Lastly, question for Dave. I noticed in their presentation that there was a pavement moratorium. How does that impact the foundry product, the foundry project and/or any rejiggering of the foundry Paquonicat-type connection there? Does that impact that?
So, typically, anytime we do a repaving project, we do have a five-year moratorium. But in that case, they're going to be doing widening of the road anyway. So, they're going to have to mill that section that they're working in. So, that's really not applicable to them because they'll be repaving that whole section as they widen out that roadway related to their intersection improvements.
Right. Include us from continuing to make progress in other areas for projects we have.
Correct.
Great. Thank you. And lastly, I echo what Craig said. I believe this is the single largest infrastructure project that we've undertaken, Connor, if I am quoting you correctly, as a town?
Yes, you are.
And I just think it's such an incredible project and initiative that's important to business growth along that corridor. And I think it speaks to the commitment of the town and all the hard work that people did, that it is coming to fruition. And I look forward to yielding the benefits that we've all anticipated to come. So, thank you so much, everybody in their teams.
Jack?
Thank you. I only have to say that I'm very pleased with the results presented today by Mr. Troyle, and especially with the scope and size of that project. And I look forward to seeing some questions that appear to be coming from the public.
Thank you. Mark?
A job well done. Single largest construction project the town's ever had under budget, had a schedule.
Say that again, Mark.
Single largest construction project the town has ever had under budget and ahead of schedule. A job well done by everyone, Connor and Dave and everybody involved. And to Tom's point, a large part of that is the work that was done after the project began or after the project was initiated with the diff and with the grants. And I want to point out, we don't have grant writers. This town doesn't have any grant writers. Those are just department heads stepping up and stepping up to the plate. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mark. And I just want to add in, you know, when we were hit with the pandemic in the beginning and we were thinking, oh, gosh, you know, and now betterments are going to be coming out, Connor and his staff really worked hard to find a way to be able to defer those betterments till February of 2022. And that's a really important part of this as we talk about coming in, you know, under budget, ahead of schedule to be able to push out the betterment obligations. I really think that that was great work. You know, Connor takes it very personally to make sure, you know, we've all met with the people in the district. We understand that. And that's a really big part of this. So, thank you very much for all the work that you did on that. I'm going to take questions. Donna has her hand raised. So, Donna Whitehead, if you, I don't know if your hand is raised on purpose or not, but if you put your question through the chat, we will definitely answer your question. So, the first one is from George Allen on South Street. George, your question is specific to your property, so we're not going to answer that on air, but if you could reach out to the town administrator's office, they will answer that. They're going to want to double-check the information on that and verify it. So, please have a conversation with them. The next one is from Bruce Kane on Lamp lighter Lane. He's been saving for the betterment for the past couple of years. Once he finds out what his betterment amount is, is he able to pay it early next year? And I believe there was another question in there. Can we pay the betterment all at once in 2021 if we know the amount? So, can you answer that, Connor?
Yeah. So, that actually leads into Dale Karister, who is one of the lead folks in a neighborhood group, many of whom are in attendance, submitted a few of the questions he was receiving through his channels that are similar to this. So, I will answer Bruce's question and then also fill in with some of the related questions that Dale has submitted. So, the question of, once we find out a betterment amount, are we able to pay it next year? Yes. So, what we've done is we were able to extend the process. So, betterments were going to be voted tonight, most likely, which would have resulted in bills being sent to every single property owner in September. And the way that that works is, once you get your bill, you can make a payment in part or in full 30 days after that bill, interest-free in any amount that you wish. You also don't need to pay anything at that time, and it will automatically be apportioned over 30 years onto your tax bill. So, people can't make a payment today because the board is not voting these betterments today. We will do that as a town at some point early on in 2021. And when we do that, we have to send a hearing notice to every single person's property in the mail that says, "We're having this hearing as the sewer commissioners to finalize the betterments for your property." Everyone will get a packet tailored to their property, not dissimilar to the information you've received already. They will say, "This is the exact amount that's going to be voted on." And at a point after that, you get a bill in the mail that says, "This is your betterment." It's going to be attached to your property as a lien. You can come in for a 30-day window and make payments, as I said before, part or all of it, interest-free if you choose to do so. You have no, you don't have to. And if you don't, it just gets added to the tax bill spread out over 30 years. So, there will be more mailings forthcoming next year. And that will lay out the timeline for folks if you do want to make early payments. Otherwise, it would just default to your tax bill, and you'll see that in January, February of 2022.
Great. The next question is from Dale Karister, who didn't put his address in, but I know he lives on South Street, so I will add that for you. For those who have gardens, can we have separate water meters installed so that water used for external watering does not increase our sewer bill?
Right now, that's not something the town does. We bill based on your water consumption. Dave, I don't know, is there anything to add to that or no?
We actually do have an irrigation meter that's available for those situations, but there's a separate fee that goes with that. There's a fee for the meter itself. You have to have a plumber install it. So, generally, for small uses, like small lots and gardens, the price of that infrastructure to get a second meter doesn't usually pan out. It's just cheaper to stay with the one-meter system. In Northeastern Village, for example, it's smaller lots up there. No one has availed themselves of the irrigation meter because the economics of it don't work out.
Great. Thank you. The next question is from Maria Wilson. I don't have her address on this either. Maria, if you'll put that in the chat so we can add it for the minutes. Will the Buckley property be allowed to get sewage? And if so, will the SBUs be added into the zone that was originally voted on? I think this is a good opportunity, Connor, if you could just explain what the privilege fees are and reserve some of that.
Sure. So, to be clear, what folks refer to as the Buckley property is a corner piece of land on South Street. That is not a piece of land that was in the sewer district when it was adopted by town meeting about 10 years ago. So, it doesn't have a betterment and therefore can't tie into the sewer as it currently stands. If that property were to tie into the sewer, they would need to pay what's called a privilege fee, which is consistent with what anyone else would have to do tying into the sewer, where they would pay the comparable amount of a betterment. So, let's say you put one single-family home on that lot, they would pay a privilege fee that is the same dollar amount as a single-family home paid in a betterment. No one is able to connect to sewer and not pay either a betterment or a privilege fee.
Great. Thank you very much. The next question is from Fran Masters. Also, Fran, if you could put your address in the chat for our record. If a single person lives in a two-bedroom house, do they pay one-bedroom or two-bedroom rate?
The betterments are assessed based on the possible flow a house can use, not based on the occupancy of a house. That's consistent with the formula that is used under the law.
Rosalynn Miller, also, if you could please put your address in the chat box for the minute, the minutes. Will this slide presentation be online? And yes, it will. All of our presentations are online, and that's on the Eastern, well, you could just go to fivecorners sewer.com, right, Connor? Is that where?
Correct.
You can get them either that way or through the town's website. It ends up on the same page. So, thank you for that question. Michael and Judy Goldberg, again, if you could please put your address in the chat box for our minutes. If you sell your property, are you responsible for paying off the betterment before you leave, or does the new owner become responsible?
So, that's a common question that comes up. It's not something that's regulated by the town. It comes down to the preference of the lending banks involved. So, if you have a betterment on your property with an outstanding balance and you sell it, the new buyer's bank issuing the mortgage commonly may want the seller and buyer to square that up through the transaction and pay off the betterment so that the mortgaging bank is not subordinate to the betterment. But it's not required. Not every single bank does it, but that ultimately comes down to that private transaction. The town doesn't regulate it.
Great. Okay. Maria Wilson had a follow-up question, asking, her question was previously about if another property tied in to the septic, and she's saying, "Does that lower our cost?" And it does not lower the cost of the people whose betterments are already apportioned because that has already been calculated based on the whole cost of the project. When the projects are designed, there's an amount of flow that is kept separate. And that's to, you know, for economic improvements, economic development. If businesses weren't tied in initially and they want to tie in, they have to pay the privilege fee for that. And the same with housing. But it doesn't impact the betterment fees because that's coming out of the part that the town reserved for the privilege fees. Is that the best way to explain it, Connor?
Yes. Yeah. So, anyone who pays a privilege fee, that goes towards paying for a part of a project cost that the town held on to with our own borrowing. It's not, we are not assessing the total cost of a project on all the betterment payers, only your proportional share. So, if somebody ties in later through a privilege, it doesn't lower betterments. They pay that cost, and it reduces the excess capacity that the town held on to for that exact purpose.
Great. And then, we have, and thank you, people, for putting your addresses in the comments. Donna Sawyer, 95 Gaslight Lane, will betterments due in the first year include what was due for this year, or will it just be the regular amount?
I'm not sure I understand. I'm interpreting that as a kind of question about the betterments being assessed later. So, the betterments being committed a year from now rather than right now will not come at a cost to anyone in this district. We were able to extend the short-term financing that the town is using at 0%. So, there's not a cost that will be born. There's no additional interest for betterment payers due to that one year. So, I hope that answers my question.
Someone ties into the sewer in August, they would have to pay the usage fee quarterly, like they're in their water bill for the amount.
Yeah, the use fee is a separate cost. Everyone, and this was another, another common question, betterments are assessed regardless of if you tie into a sewer or not. That is the state law. You could, in theory, because a project is substantially complete, tie into the sewer this August or September, and you would pay a use fee for the amount of sewer gallons you're sending, but you still don't get assessed a betterment, and it won't be on your bill until January, February of 2022.
Great. The next, it's a comment, not a question, from Dave Clifton. He says, "No question but a comment. Hats off to the town officials, the department heads, the legislators for the grant money, and the residents in the Five Corner area for their participation. A real team effort." And I couldn't agree more. Thank you, Dave, for your comment. Maria has more questions, but they really, I feel like those have been answered. And Maria, you can reach out to Michael Blanchard, and we can answer those specifically and define a little bit more what the privilege fee is. Dave writes, "Again, Easton is an example of cooperation and working together to do the right thing the right way." And Maria, another question about the Buckley property that we can answer with luckily in more detail. And then, we have another comment from Darius Zias, and he's asking about the Depot Street project, which that part of our conversation will be in our select board meeting, which will be after we conclude this meeting. So, let me see. Leo Landry, Paquonicat Avenue, is there a minimum quarterly amount per house that will be billed in each quarterly bill? So, there'll be a schedule that, once the betterments are voted, in this packet, you'll see examples of the apportionment and the amortization schedule. So, I think that they'll be billed according to the amortization schedule when that happens, right, Connor?
Right. Everyone will be given, we had one on the website for the last estimated cost. We'll put the new one up for one SBU. But the amount being paid annually for a betterment is unique to each property. So, there's not kind of a project-based minimum that everyone pays X or Y. It's, everyone has a proportional amount that's tied to their property.
Connor or Dottie, if I could just, I think they may be... Connor or Donnie, if I could just, I think they may be referring to the water bill or the sewer bill, a usage charge. I believe if that's the case, there is no minimum quarterly bill on the sewer because it's billed off the water meter. So there's a quarterly bill, a minimum bill for your water meter. If there's no usage, there'd be no sewer charge.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. And thank you again to everyone in the Five Corners Village District that was so proactive and played such an important role in the success of this project. And we're looking forward to seeing how that area thrives from economic development. So the next thing that we have on this schedule is the meeting minutes of August 5th. If people on the board have had a chance to take a look at that, and somebody would like to make a motion to accept those minutes, and then a second and a roll call vote.
So moved. Craig Barger.
Second. Second, Broussard.
Craig and Tom, and starting with you, Craig, for the roll call vote.
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Mark, you mean?
Lamb, yes.
Paul Janetti, yes. And with that, I'd like to also thank Jack Troidel for his work and his team's work on this project. So great job, Jack, and thank you for being here with us tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Thanks, Dave.
So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn this meeting. And then, if you're here for the select board meeting, please stay on. It's the same dial-in, same login. And we'll start the select board meeting in a couple of minutes. So anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Craig Barger.
Second, Broussard.
That's Barger, Broussard, and roll call Craig.
Barger, yes.
Broussard, yes.
King, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Paul Janetti, yes. Thank you so much.